All right, it's seven o'clock. I see Jeff, Jeff is here too. So, uh, welcome to the June 1st, 2021. I can't believe it's June 1st already. Uh, City of Clayton, uh, Council meeting. Happy Pride Month, everybody. And, uh, we're going to start off with our meeting protocol video. Janet, it's all yours.
Mayor Wolf, are we going to start off with roll call?
Oh, sorry. Yes. Let's start off with the roll call this time.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Diaz.
President.
Councilmember Tillman.
Here.
Councilmember Juan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cloven.
I'm here.
Mayor Wolf.
We are all here. Okay, now we can watch the video.
Yes.
Thank you.
It'll be just a moment. There we go.
Due to COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted as a Zoom webinar pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N2920, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. This meeting is being webcast on the City of Clayton's website. The mayor will call upon its council, presenters, staff, and other speakers by name, and ask that they speak clearly and state their name before giving comments or remarks. Persons participating via webcast and Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Members of the public participating by Zoom wishing to speak should use the raise hand feature or dial star nine and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. Telephone attendees will be called upon by the last four digits of their phone number. It is requested that public speakers state their name, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received by Clayton City Clerk by 5:00 PM today will be entered into the record, but will not be read out loud. If authors of the written correspondence would like to speak, they are free to do so and should raise their hand and the mayor will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The chat feature is not active. In order to get the full Zoom experience, please make sure your application is up to date.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll call on, uh, Councilmember Diaz now to please, as always, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Appreciate it. And now we'll move on to item number four, which is our consent calendar. Do we have any? Somebody want to pull anything, discuss anything on the consent calendar? Janet, do we have any hands raised in the audience to talk about the consent calendar?
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
So we'll bring it back to the council for a motion on, for the consent.
I do have a quick question.
Oh, yes.
I did have a question on the financials really quickly. I noticed that Ed Miller only received, um, one stipend check and I was curious why that was the case instead of what the other planning commissioners received.
Um, I'd like to take that offline to, um, answer and, um, it was calculated correctly.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
So Holly Tillman has made the motion. Peter, you want to second that?
I'll do so.
All right. So Vice Mayor Cloven seconds. Janet, please call the vote.
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman.
Yes.
Councilmember Juan.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cloven.
Yes.
And Mayor Wolf.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, that passes. And now, uh, on to recognitions and presentations. Uh, first, we have our do the right thing kids for, uh, the month of May, which will be our last do the right thing for, um, this school year. Uh, and this is the trait of responsibility. So hopefully we have our two principals in the waiting room. Janet, if you can see them, Ms. Sanchez, Mr. Fong, let them in. And they will tell us about their, uh, the kids that are the honorees for today. Hello, Mr. Fong. I guess, I, if you'd like to, you can, you can go first since I don't see Ms. Sanchez yet. So from Diablo View Middle School, it's Principal Fong.
Well, I have two, um, young ladies. I don't know if they should be in the waiting room as well. So it should be Malia Casada.
We'll see one.
Brooke Rooney.
I see Malia. Do we have Brooke Rooney there? There's.
There you go. All right. And there they are. All right. So I will start with Brooke. So, um, I'm going to be reading off what two of her teachers wrote about her. They say Brooke is a true example of responsibility. She's a student we can count on to have her assignments done with high quality as well as completed in a timely manner. Brooke stands out as a leader and a role model for her peers. Even through a difficult school year, she showed resilience and responsibility each and every day. Brooke is a student that exemplifies positive attitude and has nothing but a bright future ahead of her.
Yay, congratulations, Brooke. And a good smile.
All right.
So congratulations on, uh, on your do the right thing award and we'll make sure we get your certificate to you. And we also have one more student. I see Malia and her bodyguard.
I, all right. And I'm, two of her teachers, two of Malia's teachers also got together and they wrote this. Malia Casada has been consistent and responsible from day one of distance learning. She has had her camera on, face forward, and follows along in class. If you call on Malia, she promptly answers the question or reads aloud to the class. Her voice is clear and audible. Malia has improved her sentence structure and her writing skills. She takes the time to add details and makes her writing clear and fluent. Her attendance has been excellent and all of her assignments are on time and completed. Malia showed incredible leadership and responsibility this year as a member of CJSF. She was the first person to turn in her letters to her pen pal at the senior center and her letters were beautifully written and heartfelt. Malia is a delightful young lady who respects education.
Yay. Malia, who's your, who's your pen pal?
Her name was Beth.
Her name was Bess. Well, congratulations, Bess. I'm sure she helped you out with this too. So we, we thank you and thank you, Principal Fong, for a great, uh, year. And we look forward to the fall. We can go back to our regular schedule and have a lot more awards to present. So congratulations, Brooke and Malia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not see Ms. Sanchez, but I have moved.
Erin Contreras is there.
I have moved her two students into the room, so, um, unless I've missed Ms. Sanchez, perhaps you could just read the names and offer them the congratulations.
So we want to congratulate from Mount Diablo Elementary, and I don't know what grades you're in. So you'll have to tell us, but we have Summer Contreras. We have Summer Contreras there. I see Erin Contreras. Are you Summer Contreras? You don't have a sister named Winter Contreras, do you? No, okay. And, and also we have, um, Parker Gabriel. Hello, Parker Gabriel. So Parker, what, what grade are you in? Parker's in an echo chamber. You can just hold up the, how many fingers you're, what, what grade are you in? Three. She's in the third grade. And Erin, what about you? I mean, I'm sorry, Summer, what about you? You're in third grade? Well, congra-, two third graders. So we had two sixth graders today and we have two third graders. So congratulations. You are two very responsible people in order to get this award and we really appreciate your being so. So we'll make sure that we get your certificates to you ASAP, as soon as possible. So thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Sanchez. I don't know where Ms. Sanchez was. I know she was supposed to be here today, but something may have happened, but she'll be back in the fall, I'm sure. Okay.
The boarder, Mayor Wolf.
Yes.
I can see that Colleen Vanutree, who is a, uh, Mount Diablo Elementary School teacher, is in the attendee list. It's possible that she might be their teachers if she wants to speak. I'm not sure. Okay, so.
Is that your, that's your teacher? Okay.
Say the name again.
Parker says, yeah.
Vanutree is the last name. So Colleen is a first name.
Colleen? You're on mute.
Thank you, Holly. My name is Colleen Vanutree. I have been desperately holding up a Post-it note to the camera saying, I'm here for Parker. Please let me in.
We don't, we don't see you at all, but we do hear you.
Awesome. Um, I would like to, oh, hold on. You'd think I would be really good at this by now.
Wait, there we go. There we go. Hi there.
Hello. Hi, Parker. I just want to say that Parker exemplifies what it means to be responsible. She's focused and on task at all times during class. Her work is always top quality and it's completed in a timely manner. I couldn't think of any student who is more deserving of the award for responsibility than Parker is. She has earned it. Congratulations, Parker.
Congratulations. Somebody's tapping you on the shoulder. Good job. Good job.
Yeah.
And Erin, congratulations to you as well. Two of our most responsible students. Thank you.
Is it possible, really quick, to ask who Erin's teacher is, just in case that teacher is also in the attendee?
Oh, that's, I'm sorry. I keep calling her Erin because I see her name. It's actually.
Summer. I'm sorry.
It's Summer, Summer. Yes, right.
It's Jennifer Il, I L S.
Is Jennifer on?
Mayor Wolf, I don't see her as an attendee.
No. Okay.
Well, I will say that I have heard from Mrs. Il's that Summer is extremely responsible and she stands out amongst her students as someone who is deserving of this award.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. And thank you very much for, for popping in and helping out with us today. And to you too, Mr. Fong, too. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations.
Thank you for seeing me, Holly. Love to the girls.
All right. Okay. So we will move on now. We have a proclamation. Next, uh, we have, um, the proclamation, uh, June, declaring June as Portuguese National Heritage Month. So I'll read that now. Whereas in September of 1542, Portuguese explorer Juan Rodriguez Cabrio sailed a ship into San Diego Bay and became the first European to explore the land now known as California and is credited with numerous coastal discoveries. And whereas the first Portuguese settlers came from the Azores Islands, contributing substantially to setting up agricultural operations, especially dairy, vegetable, and fruit farms. And whereas in 1979, the Center for Portuguese Studies at the University of California, Santa Barbara, was founded for the purpose of promoting and developing Portuguese studies in California and the United States. And whereas among the great Portuguese Americans who have contributed significantly to this country are composer John Philip Sousa, best known for composing Stars and Stripes Forever, and poet Emma Lazarus, best known for her, uh, sonnet about the Statue of Liberty, among others. And whereas the Portuguese Heritage Society of California designated the second Saturday of June as the day to celebrate Portuguese culture through music, dance, art, cooking, parades, and other festivities. Now therefore, I, Carl Wolf, Mayor, and on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council proclaim June as Portuguese National Heritage Month in Clayton, California. And I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. All right. Now let's move on to item number six, reports, starting with our city manager and staff.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, two, um, items, um, that I wanted to touch on briefly this evening. Um, the first is, um, as I let all of you know, um, we have, um, sadly, uh, heard and accepted and congratulated, um, our current Finance Director, Paul Rodriguez, as, um, uh, about to be the Finance Director for the City of Pittsburgh. Um, that leaves me with two, uh, executive level vacancies at the moment that we will be recruiting for. And, uh, just so that, um, you're all aware, I will, um, be bringing back to you a contract for a recruiter as I think we, we need to expand our reach, um, in order to fill those positions. So that's the first thing. The second thing is we are finally starting to get more guidance from, uh, the Treasury on how, um, the smaller cities who will be getting our American Rescue Plan funds through, um, the state, how that process is going to work. Um, so we're hoping that within about 30 to 45 days, we will know the, the final value of those dollars and, um, exactly when they will be coming. And it is, um, my intent to bring forward to the City Council, um, after our regular budget process, a process to talk about those American Rescue Plan funds, et cetera, since those are not regular operating funds, um, that will be part of our operating budget. Um, so, uh, the, the uses of those funds are fairly broad. They run everything from, um, providing potential grants to, um, local businesses, small businesses. If that was the council's wish, it could be used for, um, infrastructure. That's a significant component, um, of the American Rescue Plan, uh, funds and a variety of other purposes similar to what we saw with the CARES Act funding. So just, we are finally starting to get some, uh, indication about when those funds will be coming and how I'll be bringing them forward. So just wanted to let the council know both of those items for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Raina. Okay. Now let's move on to, uh, City Council reports, uh, around the horn. How about Peter? Start with you today.
So, um, my magic day was, uh, last Thursday on the 27th and I had three meetings in the same day, going from boom to boom to boom. Um, the Cal Cities meeting was pretty awesome in the fact that we had, uh, three US congressmen, uh, Mike Thompson from the 5th District, Jerry Neri from the 9th District, then our own Mark DeSonia. And they sat down, they talked about an open bunch of questions. You just asked a question, they'd answer it. A good bit from transportation issues to infrastructure broadband to drought and water conservation, to gun violence and the spectrum of gun legislation and housing. And it was just, it, it's kind of nice getting their perspective of where they are and how they sit and how they represent us on the national level. Um, was also involved the contracost I had to this waste, um, materials commission, and then jumped right into a CBCA meeting, um, where, uh, again, it was great to hear a great presentation, um, uh, from one of our local business owners, um, for his, his business. Again, just really, really, uh, good to be a part of the city, having a lot of conversations, uh, with constituents, including, um, some hard conversations about where we are and what's happened in the past two or three years relative to our sign ordinance and the, and the resultant aspects of that. And we'll continue to have those conversations. And, uh, with that end of the report, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Jeff?
Yeah, primarily email and phone with, uh, residents. So.
Thank you, Jim.
I thank you. Uh, my, uh, last, uh, event started, started right after our last City Council meeting. On Saturday, the 22nd of May, I attended a memorial for Coach Frank Schider. For many of those that don't know Frank, he had, uh, been a long time resident and, uh, a contributor to youth sports, uh, throughout the, throughout our area. Uh, he unfortunately passed away, but they had a very nice memorial for him and I attended that. Following that, I went to the, uh, Morgan Territory Community Association, uh, event where they are tuning up all of their, uh, plans for, uh, making sure that that area out there, including the extended Marsh, we, Marsh Creek, uh, road, get proper, uh, emergency services. So it was a, it was a very, very enlightening meeting. Uh, also on the 27th, as, uh, Peter mentioned, uh, I also attended the, uh, East Bay Division and he's correct that, uh, we had, uh, our three Bay Area, uh, congressional representatives make presentations. Uh, we did get a, a video, uh, from, uh, Barbara Lee, who, uh, wasn't there in person, but just gave a welcome uh, and thanks to, to us. Uh, we then, after the meeting, uh, broke out into various, uh, groups, uh, with a variety of people from, uh, I guess with some common interest in, in the various things. And so that went until I moved over to the, uh, uh, CBCA meeting, uh, which was the monthly general membership meeting. And I, I would like to make some comments regarding that. Uh, at that meeting, uh, I was offered the opportunity uh, to address some, uh, issues and a specific matter, uh, that was addressed at a previous City Council meeting, which I want to thank, uh, the, uh, CBCA for allowing me to do that. Uh, but let me just, uh, go on the record here relative to, uh, my comments and that City Council meeting, which by the way, uh, is available on, uh, a city website and I invite, um, all people to go view it and hear exactly what was said, which I'm going to now paraphrase. And at that meeting, uh, there were some comments made, uh, at the public comment portion, uh, relative to the CBCA, uh, providing, um, monies or funds to the City of Clayton, uh, at which time, uh, Councilmember Tillman, uh, spoke and said that, uh, she didn't recall, uh, any time that money has been given to the city, which I followed up with that, uh, the CBCA had in fact, uh, provided, uh, donations, such things as the, uh, uh, as the, uh, uh, benches that are downtown and the trash receptacles that people use on a regular basis, uh, to provide, uh, provide them to drop their refuse in. And, uh, I mentioned that there was nothing said about, uh, any money being given directly. And Councilmember Juan chimed in and by saying, uh, by the way, those are what are called in the nonprofit sector, uh, in-kind donations, which they are. And both, all of us really appreciate that because they not only provided those two items that I meant, but they also, uh, provided the gazebo, which is in the, uh, Grove Park. We all appreciate what the CBCA does. Uh, the one thing that, that they do, among other things, is really help out this community, including, uh, granting, uh, uh, scholarships to very deserving students, uh, that apply for them when they, when that situation comes up. But the bottom line is, uh, I hope that that clarifies. And that's why I asked everybody to go back and review those comments. Got there, they're verbally right there, recorded for God and country on the CBCA, excuse me, the city, uh, website for all to hear what was exactly said. And that's how I, uh, uh, reprised it. And so I hope that this clarifies any misunderstanding uh, that the general public or the CBCA membership, uh, may have regarding the discussion at that meeting, uh, our last City Council meeting of May. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Uh, and now Councilmember Tillman.
Sorry. I forgot one thing. Yesterday, I attended the Memorial Day Service Event, uh, put on by the VFW Chapter, our post number five, 1525, with, uh, Mark Steinberg, the commander, and then Mike Huntley, the, uh, uh, Marine Lieutenant Colonel, that gave some wonderful remarks. And I hope people listened intently to those remarks because they were very timely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And now Holly.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on the 15th, uh, the 19th rather, um, which was the day after our last meeting, I attended the Mount Diablo Unified School District, um, Board Chair Meeting. That was also, um, uh, in conjunction with the superintendent, as well as the mayors from various cities. Um, I believe it was yourself, Walnut Creek, Pleasant Hill, and I might be missing a city.
Concord.
Thank you. Yep. Um, and at that meeting, we discussed various things that all of our cities might have in common, but the main point was for us to have a dialogue, um, with those mayors and the school district to figure out how we can partner together to better serve our schools. So, um, it was nice to hear that we will be going back full time in the fall, um, which is great. And, um, the superintendent shared a lot of information, uh, regarding whether or not there was going to be virtual, uh, schooling. I think that there was some clarification that he made for all of us, uh, at that meeting, after he had sent out the information that there would be possibly some virtual, um, distancing through December, I think it is, the first semester for students. Um, he said that only 200 students had signed up for that option. So it looks like the majority of the students will be going back full time, which is great. Um, and the options just for those that are online, if you happen to have children that are school age children, he did share that there will still be, uh, independent study for those students who are home hospital that are doing that. Um, if there's parents that are, that are unsure that there will be, um, a short-term online distance learning option, which will go through December, as I just mentioned. Um, and then for those who might be hesitant to go back, there would be the option for them to do homeschooling, which has always been that option. I mean, that's through Horizon. So just wanted to give that feedback. Uh, but it was nice. And we have another meeting coming up in the summer, um, where we'll collaborate again. But the point was to, um, start the dialogues that all of our cities are pulling together to have conversations with the district. So that was on the morning of the 19th or the afternoon. Um, that evening I had another meeting with Abar, which is anti-bias, anti-racism, um, subcommittee, uh, for the district that we're starting to set up. And then that evening later, I had a meeting with, um, Raina as well, with the Library Foundation, um, just to have another meeting with them, as well as the county librarian, um, to kind of level set and clear the air on how everything got to where we are, um, and to have a better partnership and collaboration with them just so that we're aware of when things are happening, um, and have better dialogues that we understand what the county is thinking. We also have a liaison that serves on that board. Um, she's part of their, Raina reminded me of the word. She's not a, um, it's their county, I'm drawing a blank on what her function is, sorry.
County Library Commission?
Commission. Thank you. I don't know why I couldn't. I was drawing a blank on that word. Um, but she also attends meetings and she brings that back to the, uh, foundation, um, board as well. So just having a dialogue with all of us to be sure we're all on the same page. There were no changes from what we all discussed during our City Council meeting, um, that they took part in. But just wanted to let you guys know that we are continuing those conversations. Um, and to the extent that we do come up on a pile of money that we can offer more hours to the library, that'd be great. They do understand now that there will not be Sunday hours available, but it's possible to maybe have, uh, additional hours in the week, which is what they were trying to ask for. Um, if she could kind of shift her hours so that we could have more nighttime hours for our, um, commuters. That was all on the 19th. Then on the, sorry. Then on the 27th, I also, I will be abridged with this, the Cal City, uh, Cal Cities East Bay Division, which, um, my fellow, fellow council members have already discussed. Um, I also attended the CBCA meeting as well. Um, and the, uh, conversation that evening, I've had several phone calls and, and attended that meeting. And it was, it was, um, a lot more intense and I think you'll probably hear some comments coming up in public comment. But I do just want to, um, clarify one thing, which was the comment that I made about, um, whether or not the CBCA was, uh, giving funds to the city, I'm, I'm paraphrasing as well, is what I was trying to clarify. I am not aware of the CBCA giving funds, whether it was a donation done 20 years ago for benches, et cetera. That wasn't the comment that was made and that was not the context that a lot of people on the line, um, understood it to be. It almost sounded as if, in order to receive information ahead of time, um, prior to anyone else finding out, um, it was because the CBCA was giving money to the city. And that was, that was the point I was trying to ensure we cleared the record on, um, while we had everybody on the line that night. And so it, it's, to me, that's completely different than glossing over and saying, oh, it was because the CBCA gave park benches years ago and that was an in-kind donation. That wasn't the implication. And I think that's how come a lot of people in the community are angry. Um, I'm glad we're having these conversations so that we can clear the air because it's. I'm glad we're having these conversations so that we can clear the air because the CBCA does do a lot of good for this community and their name should not be tainted in any way. Neither should ours or the prior councils. That's not what the CBCA does. That's not what our city stands for. No one is getting favors by donating anything. And I want to be very clear to everybody that's on the line tonight. If that's what you heard two weeks ago or in the last two weeks, please clarify that with everyone, just so we're all on the same page. If that wasn't the intent, then I would like that stated precisely that that's not what's happening. But that was how it was implicated the night that it happened. And I think that that needs to be cleared up. Today, I had the honor of attending the Pride event, even though I was late and I missed you, Peter, down there. I had a doctor's appointment, but I am wearing my Pride shirt and I'm wearing my Pride shoes and I'm a proud parent of a daughter who was in that community and a true ally and was down there celebrating the flag being raised and I'm proud of our city for doing it. So thank you. End of my report.
And then on the 20th, okay. All right. So for my, for my report, I echo a lot of what's been said already. I attended the East Bay Cal Cities Division Meeting, very informative thing there. Let's see what else. I also attended the meeting with the different mayors and city managers and our city manager and, and Councilmember Tillman with the Mount Diablo Unified School Board, the school district. That was a very informative meeting and thanks for wrapping that in a bow there, Holly. Let's see. Aside from my normal meetings with Reyna and my meeting with, I had a meeting with Vice Mayor Cloven. I got a chance to tour the Semex Quarry. I know many of you have done it or are going to be doing it. It, I realize it is now Semex. Semex is what it's called. For all this time, I've been calling it C-Mex and they corrected me 8,000 times. So now I will not say C-Mex, like the cement pond. It's not that. It's Semex. All right. Anyway, so that was very informative. It's, it's great to go there and to see what they do. And they're really trying very hard to be eco-friendly. They got a lot of, a lot of good people out there, work very hard. I gave my CBCA meeting report. I also attended the Black Diamond Crucible Memorial Welcome Event at, Reception at Oakhurst. And that was the, what, what happens is these soldiers, veterans, they go out to Byron and they parachute a couple of times in the morning and then they hike 15 miles from Byron to Clayton. And when they got to Oakhurst, they were dead tired and ready, but ready to party. So, but they did have a very good, a very good memorial there. And I got a chance to, to see that. So that was, that was good. And I also attended the Memorial Day Event Downtown on Memorial Day and got a chance to welcome everybody to Clayton on the hottest day of the year. And let's see, I had a special meeting of the East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy. And let's see if there's anything else. Oh, by the way, I did not attend the, I did not view or attend in any way the Planning Commission Meeting. I know there was a CW on there, but it was not me. So if there's another CW in town, let's have lunch. Anyway, so that is my report. And we shall move on now to, I have number seven, public comment on non-agenda items. You'll have three minutes. Please raise your hand. Let us know you would like to speak on non-agenda items. And like I said, you'll have up to three minutes. So Janet.
Thank you, Mayor Wolf. Our first speaker is John. John, as I permit you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
John Rubia, speaking of CBCA, John Rubialis was.
Thank you, Mayor Cloven. I just, as a representative president of CBCA, we have some comments we'd like to clarify in regards to the last city council meeting. The Clayton City, excuse me, the Clayton Business Community Association existed since 1984. We are a charity, not a department of the city of Clayton. Our motto for the good of the Clayton community. We have lived up to this motto through our well-known festivals, bocce, holiday decorations, Mrs. Claus, and many other efforts. The profits from our events are put back into the community in the form of grants, scholarships, and public improvements, to name just a few. That we have been able to do this is due solely to the countless hours donated to, by our members and thousands of volunteers without whom we could not exist. For many years at our monthly meetings, a member of the Planning Commission and City Council, who are also CBCA members, gives a report on what the commission and the council have done since the previous month. That information includes votes that have been already reported in public meetings. At the council's May 18th meeting as part of a public hearing, Commissioner Frank Gavidia, with the support of Councilman Diaz, asserted the planning commission members were announcing planning commission decisions at CBCA meetings that were not already available to the public. Commissioner Gavidia asserted that, quote, "A private organization that happens to give money to the city gets to find out the result of votes before the rest of the public." When Councilmember Tillman asked for a basis of the give the monies, the city comment, Councilmember Diaz gave an example of CBCA donating money to the city could install, excuse me, so the city can install benches and trash receptacle downtown. Commissioner Gavidia's accusations were an egregious and purposeful attack directed to CBCA and anyone who else, I mean, anyone who, anyone, everyone who is or ever has been a public, excuse me, has been a member, is also factually false. The commission vote at issue was taken in a public meeting on February 23rd and was therefore known to the taxpayers at the moment the vote was reported. Two days later, at CBC's general meeting on February 25th, Commissioner Shapiro reported on the commission's public vote from two days earlier. Commissioner Gavidia was not present at the commission meeting because he had recused himself from the commission's consideration of the project. As to giving money to the city, CBCA does not and never has simply given money to the city of Clayton. CBCA has donated tens of thousands of dollars for public events and improvements over the decades. Donations approved in votes of our membership, those donations were public-specific, excuse me, project-specific and were not a gift of money to the city treasury. Yes, that CBCA has brought preferred access, excuse me, has bought preferred access. Information is ridiculous. Commissioner Gavidia is a current CBCA member. Councilmember Diaz is a longtime member who himself has given counsel and planning commission reports. We feel that they both need to retract the false statements, same public forum, as they were uttered. Thank you. Councilman Diaz, thank you for your clarification tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you, John. All right, Janet, next up.
Our next speaker is AJ. AJ, as you're promoted to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Hello, city council members and staff. My name is AJ Chippero and I'm a citizen of Clayton, as well as the current Chair of the Planning Commission. I'm speaking tonight in defense of a false accusation leveled against me by another planning commissioner. At the last open public city council meeting on May 18th, Commissioner Frank Gavidia made the following statement. "So CBCA members found out about the results of the vote before the taxpayers of Clayton found out. That did not make any sense to me. A private organization that happens to give money to the city gets to find out the results of the votes before the rest of the public. That's just not right." End quote. "If what Commissioner Gavidia said is true, then I expect the city council, as well as the city of Clayton, will take action against the planning commissioner accused of providing results of a vote to the CBCA before it is available to the public. Being the planning commissioner in question, I can assure you that what Commissioner Gavidia is accusing me of doing in that reckless statement is false. The vote count I reported on to the CBCA membership on February 25th was a publicly recorded vote at the open planning commission meeting that took place two days prior to the CBCA meeting on February 23rd. Any single member of the public that attended that meeting or watched the video replay could have provided the same report to the CBCA that I did on the day in question. While Commissioner Gavidia may have been exercising his right to free speech by commenting as a citizen during the portion of the city council meeting, he is also a current planning commissioner that was acting irresponsibly by making reckless accusations against the current chair of the planning commission and the CBCA. Left unchecked, these accusations may have caused irreparable damage to the city of Clayton, the city's planning commission, and the CBCA. This begs the question, does Commissioner Gavidia have a responsibility as a current planning commissioner to refrain from making false and damaging claims by spreading seeds of misinformation? This was not an uninformed citizen making false accusations against the chair of the planning commission. This was a current planning commissioner that knows what he said was not the truth. Before we go down the road of what about-isms, this allegation was not one commissioner being rude to another commissioner on social media. Although that may have been in poor taste, it is nowhere near as serious as the allegations that Commissioner Gavidia made against the CBCA and myself. Based on Commissioner Gavidia's sparse statement to the CBCA, he shows little remorse, offered no apology, and did not admit that what he said was incorrect. Due to the nature of these allegations, Commissioner Gavidia's actions should not be left unchecked and he should be held accountable. Unfortunately, Councilmember Diaz whitewashed that statement quite a bit. So I am urging the city council at minimum to censor Commissioner Gavidia. I feel as far more suitable action would be for his removal from the planning commission. I thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, AJ.
Our next speaker is Keith. Keith, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Keith, you're on mute.
Okay, I believe I'm on mute now.
There we are. Hi, Keith.
All right. I'm also going to follow up on some comments already made as to comments that were made at the last city council meeting on May 18th. At that meeting, Planning Commissioner Gavidia accused the members of the CBCA, having found out at their meeting on, in, I believe it was February, the results of a vote taken by the planning commission of the city of Clayton before the taxpayers of Clayton found out. This claim was false, as you've already heard this evening. The results that were actually referred to there occurred at an open public meeting that was held by the planning commission two days earlier. The meeting was held via Zoom and opened to the public and anyone observing the meeting would have learned of the results of the meeting at that time. So the sharing of this public information by a member of the planning commission was sharing information already available to the public, not prior to the public learning about the results of the vote, which was charged at the meeting held by the city council. Commissioner Gavidia went on to infer that the CBCA found out about this vote before the rest of the public because the club happens to give money to the city. The city has donated to many, many civic projects and activities, such as Daffodil Hill and the Concert in the Grove Summer Concert Series. But the club does not, never has donated money to the city of Clayton for inappropriate access to non-public information. And Commissioner Gavidia did not share any examples of his claim. Both these claims are false and misleading and challenge the integrity and honesty of both the public, public city of Clayton and their planning commission and the CBCA. I think Commissioner Gavidia owes the city of Clayton and the CBCA a public apology and a retraction of his incorrect accusations to help repair the damage that these statements have caused. In connection with this issue, City Councilman Jim Diaz also owes the city of Clayton and the CBCA a formal apology due to the examples that he provided for the accusation that the CBCA gives money to the city of Clayton, which appeared to support the inference that those direct payments to the city resulted in the CBCA receiving non-public information from the city. But again, no actual examples supported that claim and he did not dispute the claim on the call. And with both of which damaged the city and the CBCA. City Councilman Diaz is a long-term member of the CBCA and he served multiple terms on the city council. And he knew or should have known that the impression he created regarding incorrect CBCA donations was false and very misleading and damaging. As a result, I think that Councilman Diaz also owes the city of Clayton and the CBCA an apology for this damage that he has caused based on the incorrect impressions. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Janet, do we have anybody else?
Next speaker is Terry. Terry, as I permit you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Terry.
Hello.
Hello.
Alrighty. On May 23rd, 2018, a group of five people launched the Save Clayton website and Facebook site and immediately began to use it to spread misinformation and attack members of the Clayton community in support of city council bids by Jeff Wong and his running mate and a planning commission bid by Frank Gavidia. Following the 2018 election, the misinformation and attack articles by Save Clayton ensued forward, though casting the net wider to additional community members and the local newspaper. Personally, I believe they're behind the propaganda flyers that have been spread downtown, as well as the letters mailed to 3,600 Clayton homes recently. Over the last three years, I've watched this group and those that they support plant false seeds into cyberspace and watch the misinformation grow like wildfires. And for what? The claims of corruption and ulterior motives by members of our community that Frank and his Save Clayton colleagues always allege have never proven to have any validity. I believe Frank Gavidia's recent attack on the CBCA and his fellow planning commissioners was not accidental. It was the same flavor of the basis attacks on former Councilmember Tuya Catalano that he authored on his campaign website and not too different than the writings of his Save Clayton friends. Only this time, they chose to plant their seed of false allegations against the CBCA, an organization that works so hard to give back to the people of this city. People of this community are fed up with these antics. Frank, as a CBCA member and a planning commissioner, you know better. You know that what you said wasn't truthful. Why did you choose to spread the lie? Frank, you owe the CBCA and the people of Clayton an apology and I hope you'll do so for the sake of your community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor Wolf.
Thank you, Terry. Janet, do we have anyone else?
Mayor Wolf, at this time, I do not have any other hands raised. One just went up. Two just went up. So Basam, I will permit you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Basam.
Good morning, good evening, Mayor Wong. Just want to mention that City Council One and City Council Diaz and then candidate Frank Gavidia asked for my removal from the planning commission for my statement misread by them multiple times, even after being corrected against the police for the Black Lives Matter March. They accused me of giving a misstatement and they wanted my removal officially on the record and unofficially as well with conversation with the city. What Commissioner Gavidia in public said about the CBCA is false and a lie. And accusing another commissioner that the head of the planning commission of that is just simply, again, it's false and much worse from what Mr. Diaz and Mr. Wong accused me of doing. Would Mr. Diaz and Mr. Wong have the courage to do what they attempted to do against me against Mr. Gavidia? I'm gonna ask him for that again. Would they have the courage? Or is this a political game for them? Thank you.
Thank you, Basam. Janet, you said you had a couple more hands went up?
I do. I have two more hands raised. Edward, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can see you too. Hi, Ed.
Okay, excellent. So, thank you. My name is Ed Hartley. I'm a longtime CBCA member. I wanted to point out that the CBCA submitted a detailed four-page letter to the mayor responding to the events that occurred at the May 18 council meeting. I'd like that acknowledged and made part of the record tonight. The comments by Commissioner Gavidia, who is a current CBCA member, were a direct attack. And there's no other way to put it, as to the integrity of CBCA in its relationship with the city. CBCA's bylaws have forever precluded the CBCA from taking part in political advocacy in this city. We don't do it. We have never done it. And the comments by Commissioner Gavidia directly attacked that with no basis. And Commissioner Chippero has laid out the, apart the factual context of that, which is laid out in more detail in the CBCA's letter. Councilmember Diaz's comments do not address and are in no way a retraction of his supporting comments of the CBCA giving money to the city. The CBCA does not buy influence. It does not buy information. And the suggestion that that occurred is a disservice to the hundreds of members and thousands of volunteers who give of their time and effort to CBCA to help it raise money, to give it back to the community. And what is needed as a result of the comments and the supporting comments is a clear clearly stated retraction of those statements. And that has not happened tonight. And so this will, this will not, this does nothing to heal the unfortunate but purposeful attack on CBCA. And it needs to happen because CBCA, as a community service organization, exists at the trust of the community. And if the community cannot trust CBCA, then we do not have reason to exist. And that's why it is very important, in light of the statements made tonight and the comments made tonight, that this be retracted forcefully and clearly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Our next speaker is Scott. Scott, as you are promoted to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Hey, guys. Just wanted to thank you. ACW, thank you all for your time. We've heard a lot tonight about last week's CBCA meeting and about the actions of Frank Gavidia and current Councilmember Jim Diaz. Not going to get into the weeds because their actions and their words honestly were very and their intent was obvious to all who heard them. When I think about this community, about the divide in it, I keep hearing people on all sides talking about how they want to get Clayton back to what it once was, how to keep it the quaint little town that we all love so much. Yet what I continually hear from people on all sides of the aisle is that all of this divisiveness started back in 2016 and really got worse during the 2018 election. What changed during that time? We all know what changed nationally, but what we have here now in Clayton is a microcosm of exactly those types of behaviors. People who will bully others, people who will attack members of their own community online, people who will foment divisiveness just for their own agendas, or maybe even for their own entertainment. This is what has changed, and this is what we need to get away from if we really want to get back to everything that once made Clayton great. We are still all of those things, but we just need to work through these poor behaviors brought about by individuals who are doing nothing but to serve themselves. Mr. Diaz and Mr. Gavidia, you have already been asked to deliver a public apology at CBCA, and you have both miserably failed in that first attempt. The community needs to see a lot more from each of you. The CBCA does nothing but to raise money and deliver resources to this community, and you have tried to impugn their character for your political goals. All we heard last Thursday night, and even more pitifully again tonight from Diaz, was platitudes, explanations, and excuses. I expect more from both of you, and I'm very disappointed in both of you. Mr. Diaz, I honestly expect a lot more from you because I actually, I know that you actually do a lot for this community. So I hope that you'll be willing to deliver a proper apology to the community and to the CBCA in particular on your third attempt. Mr. Gavidia, you have a long history of creating false narratives and political situations out of things that are anything but. It's clear what you were doing here to me and to many in the community, and I encourage you to continue to indict yourself. Some people have the distinction of running off a sweet dressmaker that spent 28 years giving her entire life to this community. We had the privilege of somebody so uniquely qualified as to be a land use attorney, and you chased her off as well, and you chased off the likes of Mindy Gentry just because she didn't want to deal with your stuff as well. Well, you know what, guys? I'm sick and damn tired of it, and I'm not going to watch you chase off any more good people that want to just serve Clayton. It's time that you stand accountable for your actions and stop delivering divisiveness to our community plain and simple. I've been saying this for over two years now, and it seems to be catching a little bit of wind. If we really want to get back to being the best version that Clayton can be, we need to save Clayton from the Facebook group Save Clayton. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Janet?
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, then we will close this portion of public comment and move along. We have item number eight, public hearing, and Raina, you wanted to?
Thank you, Mayor. I have moved Dana Ayers, interim community development director, into the room. She will make a very brief presentation, and then we can move through this.
Hi, Dana.
Good evening, Mayor Wolf, members of the council. This item is a appeal, a consideration of an appeal filed by a developer of a proposed project, the Oak Creek Canyon project. And just as a very brief background, this project was considered at a public hearing by the planning commission on February 23rd. At that meeting, the planning commission closed the public hearing after accepting written and spoken testimony and made a motion to direct staff to return with a recommend, excuse me, with a resolution of denial of the project. Staff returned with a resolution of denial at the following meeting on March 9th, which the planning commission subsequently adopted at that meeting. The developer subsequently filed an appeal of the planning commission's denial, and that is the question before the City Council or to be considered by the City Council at a future date. At this point in time, staff is still working with the developer to try to resolve some of the questions and concerns that were raised by planning commissioners at the public hearing on February 23rd. And so we are requesting only that the City Council tonight continue the item without testimony to the June 29th meeting. And with that, I'll answer any questions that anybody has, but there is no other action or discussion being requested at the City Council at this time.
So we're going to continue to June 29th, and Raina, we need a motion on that?
Yes.
I have a question.
Hold on, we have a question. Guess, Councilmember Juan.
How long do we have to hear the appeal after it's filed? What's the limit?
So there are several entitlements that are at that are associated with this project. One of them is a tentative map, and the subdivision map act specifies that appeals of decisions with respect to tentative maps must be heard within 30 days. The, thus, the item was scheduled for this evening. The notice of decision, I guess to back up a little bit, the notice of decision for this project was prepared in May. I'm trying to remember the date, I'm sorry. And under Clayton municipal code, the appeal period starts from the date of the notice of decision. And so the developer filed a timely appeal following the notice of decision, and the public hearing needs to be held within 30 days after that.
Okay. Can I walk back a date, just for clarification?
Sure.
So the meeting was on March 9th?
Yes.
Okay. And then the notice of decision was filed when?
I don't have the exact date. I believe it was May.
May, May-ish?
Early May, yes. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact date.
Is there a, is there a date by which the notice of decision has to be filed?
There's nothing that's specified in municipal code that I am aware of. It's simply.
The filing.
It's simply states.
Yeah, the filing of the notice is what starts the clock.
For the appeal, yes, for the appeal.
Okay. And then from the, from the date that the notice is filed, how long does anyone have to appeal?
In this instance, five days.
Five days?
Yes, and that has to do with the fact that the, one of the actions that the planning commission, one of the applications that the planning commission acted on with respect to denial was a recommendation of a general plan and a zoning amendment.
Okay, so the, so the dates are they depend on the action that's under, in question, I guess?
Generally speaking, yes. Most appeal periods are 10 days. However, statute, state statute specifies that in the case of a recommendation by a planning commission against a general plan or zoning amendment, the appeal period is reduced to five days.
Okay. And then we have 30 days, but I guess if we're talking early May, it's now early June, so we're getting in under 30 days. So if we continue the, the action or sorry, the, this item, then how long can we continue it for? What's the limit?
There's no necessary, there's not necessarily a limit on how long you can continue it. However, the applicant and staff have agreed to a continuance to June 29th.
Did we continue it like 90 days? Or 120 days?
I would say not with the, not without the consent of the applicant.
Okay. Is there like, I'm just looking for what the actual rule is. Like, assume there's no consent. What would be the limit?
I don't know, Councilmember Juan, if there's a specific limit. I think the concern is that I've typically seen this type of 30-day requirement because the concern is without consent, that you have due process issues, that you're not timely hearing this, and they need to get in an action on, on the decision, whether it's an approval or denial. So absent a consent, as Dana has indicated, I think 90 days is getting quite long.
Okay. And so according to the according to the rapport, we are we are requesting that we continue this till the June 29th meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
So if, if I might just, a clarification, when we get to that point, we will ask that the council open the public hearing and continue it to June 29th. Just want to make sure that we open the, the hearing itself and continue it since it was noticed for this evening. So no intent, again, as Dana said, to take testimony, et cetera, or presentation, but open that hearing and continue it. Thank you.
And then just a further point on what Jeff was asking then. If for some reason, this is still not, both sides are still not ready, or the developer still isn't, you guys would just let us know again by the June 29th meeting, and we would just go through the same process we're going through now to continue it another 30 days or so?
Yes, provided that the developer agrees to an additional extension, yes.
Okay.
The deadlines for performance on applications are generally defined in state law, but they can be extended with the mutual agreement of the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would move, Mayor, that we grant the request from city staff to allow for an agreeable extension with the developer in question, and that it be put on the appropriate agenda item in the future.
And Raina, do you need us to say that we need to open the public hearing in that motion?
Yes.
So would Jimmy, you want to amend your motion to include that?
Oh, yes, of course. We will have the open the public hearing that's appropriate with that.
Open and continued to the
Right.
29th.
But we don't have public hearing tonight, correct? It's just move the
We're just opening tonight and continuing to June 29th.
Right, thank you. That's correct. June 29th.
We need a second.
Point of, point of order, I think you need to take public comment first.
Anyone is present and wants to speak.
Pardon me?
If anyone is present and wants to speak.
Right, I don't believe we have anybody.
Mayor Wolf, I can confirm, no one has their hands raised on this.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so we'll close that. And then we need a second on Jim's motion.
I'm going to second it for the third time.
Going to second it for the third time? Tillman, Tillman, Tillman. Okay, and now Janet, please call the vote.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cloven?
Hi.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're continuing to June 29th. Action items tonight, discussion regarding potential hazard pay ordinance. And Raina, will you lead that one off?
I can certainly give it a very brief introduction. At our last council meeting, it was requested that staff bring back the issue of whether the council wishes to pursue anything related to hazard pay ordinance, and specifically the City Council report and the ordinance from the city of Concord have been included for your information in the packet this evening. And with that, it is to the council for discussion, and if there is any direction to staff, we will take that at the appropriate time.
Okay, Peter, this is your, I see your hands up, so go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So I want to give you a little background on why I was, I'm familiar with to some extent. One of constituents in Clayton reached out to me on April 9th, and I received an inquiry into COVID pay and why, as a resident of Clayton and who worked at Safeway, the city did not approve it. And I go, I wasn't quite sure. She said all the stores around it were being compensated, and why, asked why we weren't. So I responded to her that I wasn't even familiar with it, hadn't been brought to us, and that I knew that there was going to be some funds available through the American Recovery Act, that we're going to be able to try to disperse to small businesses at that time, and that seemed to satisfy her back in April. And then the day before our last meeting, May 17, she reached out to me and asked me why it wasn't on the May 18th agenda. And I thought that was kind of an odd request because I thought I'd satisfied her answer before. So I reached out to Tim McGowan before our last meeting. I said, what is this about? And he gave me a little bit of information about what they did in Concord. And then we had our meeting. As you know, at our last meeting, we had a lot of Safeway employees. We had junior representatives come and tell us about their struggles with COVID and what happened during the pandemic. And my heart reaches out to them with gratitude for the reference. I mean, I get they were truly essential workers and working during the pandemic. And I'm keenly aware of the risk they took to support their families and provide food to our families. I'm also quite aware, well aware of the abuse they took from anti-vaxxers and those who didn't believe in COVID at all. At that meeting, I requested this be brought to us. I wanted to find out more about COVID Day Pay, which is actually not COVID Day, it's called Hazard Pay. And I requested that we get information about what the city of Concord had done. And what was their, since I've actually found out, what is the impetus that caused city of Concord to even bring it up to the city of Concord in the first place? In a nutshell, I've learned that city of Concord had the unions go to one of their committees in January of 2021 to talk about COVID pay. That committee talked about it in early February and then early March, and then brought it to the city council mid-March, which adopted an urgency resolution ordinance directing that all employers over, who have employees over 300 actually have hazard pay, which was up to $5 an hour for additional pay for their employees. I want to be clear. The union who brought that to the city of Concord never brought that to the city of Clayton. We were not aware of it, as far as know, we were never presented it, and we never discussed it. Therefore, the city of Clayton did not disapprove of it. We just weren't aware of it. Now, after hearing the plight of citizens last week and the inequities of pay scales relative to their compatriots in the city of Concord, I felt it was appropriate for us to have this conversation tonight. And I just wanted to acknowledge them as truly essential workers and that they were on the front lines like our medical workers. But I also wanted to let them know that we're getting close to being out of this. It's like two weeks until we're into the next tier, and it makes things a little challenging as far as our discussion. And so I'm looking forward to comments from the rest of my city council members as we talk about this.
Thank you, Peter. And just point of clarification, I think on the 15th, we eliminate the tiers altogether.
And that's something.
So let's talk about this, folks. What do you, anybody have comments or?
I would also, you have at least one hand raised, so you may wish to take public comment before any further discussion unless there are questions for clarification. But in this case, it would tip, there's not really clarification. So you may wish to take public testimony.
Okay, and if somebody have any, anybody have any questions, points of clarification?
I'd just like to clarify that. I think the, in the materials, we've included the ordinance that the city of Concord passed.
Yes.
I think that is by way of reference only. It's not a suggestion in any way. It's just an example of what a nearby city has done. So I don't think that that's currently on the table.
Correct.
And I think, Peter, that's what you were requesting, right, was the?
It was just an understanding of what they did and why, so that we can have a discussion about what we might do, period.
All right. And Janet, Janet, you have some hands raised.
Hey, yes, that is correct. Mayor Wolf, uh, the first hand is Evan. Evan, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Evan, are you there?
Yes, you can hear me?
Yes.
My name is Evan Miller. I'm here to uh, deliver public comment on item nine on, on behalf of the California Grocers Association. Um, uh, one moment here, sorry.
Did we lose you? Did we lose, uh, Evan? I think we did. Janet, uh?
If you'd like, we can go to our next speaker. Uh, that is Bambi. Bambi, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Thank you. And then when Evan comes back, we'll get him. I think Bambi's frozen. Oh, there she is. Okay. Hello, Bambi.
Hi, thank you for your time today. Hi, City Councilwoman, Mayor. I appreciate you guys taking the time today. Um, I hope, hopefully you guys can hear me clearly.
Yes, yes, we can.
So um, a couple of things that I wanted to bring to light, um, I personally reached out to Clayton City Council, but I did want to clarify what originally happened, since Peter did bring this up. So originally, when we filled out the paperwork for Concord City Council, this falls on this border between Concord and Clayton. So eleven ninety-five was originally assumed part of the Concord. So we didn't feel that we were going to reach out to Clayton because it was included originally in the Concord paperwork. Then it came to our light that it was a Clayton zip code. So when Concord got it and Clayton didn't, we looked into it to find out that the zip code was Clayton Valley, Sir Clayton City. So that's why we reached out in April, which I personally reached out with an email, sending um, the attachments for what Concord passed and everything. Um, this isn't the only city that we're requested that is still working on it. We've requested this in Antioch. There was um, you know, multiple meetings on it. Antioch has decided to do retro on this because it has gotten to the plate so late. So they did agree to do, um, they did agree that they would look back on the retro. They have not voted this yet. So Antioch City has not voted it yet, but that's the last place that we left off with their city council because of the fact that it came to light so late. So I just wanted to clarify that. It wasn't that we didn't want to reach out to Clayton. It was a misunderstanding of the zip code for this Safeway. Some of the mail that comes to the Safeway is listed as Concord and some of it's listed as Clayton. I believe that's why we, we believed it was part of the Concord. These workers, um, they've been super supportive of everybody that's gone through this from the beginning. We asked for the five dollar increase in pay. It's not a permanent um, position. It's only temporary. It's to show the gratitude. It's to help with those incomes of the families that have lost a double income, and they're only on a grocery worker's income trying to survive a family. They didn't get to collect unemployment. They didn't get to collect the additional three hundred dollar bump in unemployment that was given to them. They were required to come to work. And they did so gratefully to help their community. But they didn't have the option to stay home and shelter. They didn't know what they were walking into when this began. They weren't the first ones in the line to get the vaccine either. In fact, they were made to call customers to see if they could come in for the vaccine. A lot of our pharmacy techs were dealing with that with an overload of work. These employees are extremely grateful to be working. Please don't misunderstand me. I have never seen a bunch of stronger workers that say, I'm thankful that I have a job. I'm thankful that I am working. But the truth of the matter is, they lost that second, that second income to their homes. They had childcare issues because there was no daycare open. The schools were not open. And it was a balancing act, and they had to have their unemployed spouse stay home, and they were the ones surviving on their grocery worker income for mortgages, rent and car payments. Please
Maybe you're a bit over time now.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor.
You for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor Wolf, I have Evan back. So Evan, I'm going to promote you to panelist. If you can please unmute your microphone.
There you are. Hi, Evan. Welcome back.
So sorry about that. It's had some technical difficulties here.
Seconds left.
So, uh, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Evan Miller, and I'm uh, here on behalf of the California Grocers Association. Uh, CGA respectfully asks you not to move forward with the grocery worker pay ordinance, given the state of the reopening of the economy, combined with the negative consequences to grocery workers, neighborhoods and the grocer industry. Uh, we agree that grocery workers serve a vital and essential role during the pandemic. They have worked tirelessly to keep stores open for consumers, allowing our communities to have uninterrupted access to food and medications. To protect our employees, grocery stores were among the first and continue to implement uh, numerous safety protocols, including providing PPE and masks, performing wellness checks, enhancing sanitation and cleaning, limiting store capacity and instituting social distance requirements. Uh, grocery employees have also received a minimum of a hundred and sixty hours of additional supplemental paid leave to care for themselves and their families. And this is on top of their already existing leave benefits. Grocers have also provided employees additional pay and benefits in various forms, including hourly and bonus pay, averaging an extra two dollars to three dollars, along with other significant forms of support that reduce their expenses and increase their safety. Uh, most importantly, the industry fought for early access to the vaccine for all grocery workers who have been eligible since February. Across California, all grocery workers have been able to receive the vaccine and take paid leave to do so. A broad reopening of the economy in Clayton and across California is currently underway. We believe it is inconsistent and harmful to reopening efforts for local jurisdiction to label grocery stores as a hazard when it is not supported by evidence and while simultaneously pushing to reopen hospitality, entertainment and other retail operations. Finally, this policy would increase employment costs to grocers by as much as thirty percent overnight. This significant increase would severely impact store viability and result in increased prices for groceries, limiting operating hours, reduce, reduced hours for workers, fewer workers per store, and most concerning, possible store closures. Uh, we respectfully implore the city council to not move forward with a grocery pay, grocery worker pay ordinance at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Evan.
Janet?
Mayor Wolf, our next speaker is John. John, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Hello, can you, uh, can you hear me?
Hi, John. Welcome. Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is John Gomez. Uh, I'm a thirteen year grocery worker and a member and representative of UFCW Local Five. Uh, I first would like to speak, um, you know, I would like to address, uh, you know, the comments by the California Grocers Association. I just would like the council to keep in mind that in Northern California alone, seventeen cities have passed uh, a, a form of hazard pay ordinance. And none of the negative effects that the California Grocers Association mentioned in their comment have happened. Uh, we haven't seen stores out here closed. We haven't seen, uh, you know, hours being cut. We haven't seen, you know, you know, prices going up any more than they already have, uh, since the beginning of the pandemic. Um, you know, it, it's clear that these companies can afford to pay this. Um, companies like Lucky's is a perfect example, as they have paid hazard pay throughout the entirety of the pandemic without cutting hours or closing stores. Um, only stores that have closed are down south. Uh, there are Kroger company stores, uh, which Kroger states is because of hazard pay. In reality, these stores were already slated for closure. They were already underperforming and were going to close anyways. The only reason they continued to stay open was because of the pandemic and the increase in profits that they have enjoyed. Um, that being said, you know, yes, things are starting to open up, uh, but there's still that risk there. Now, especially with things opening up and masks mandates being lifted. You know, we're now going to be seeing unvaccinated, you know, potentially infected customers coming into the store and interacting with the workers. Um, these workers have been at it now for the past year and a half, risking their lives to ensure that the community continues to be fed. And, you know, yes, things are opening up, but we can't just look past what they've done in the last year and a half. So, you know, I think it's important that we, we do what we can, uh, again, whether it be through the CARES Act funds or it be through a passing of, of a hazard pay ordinance that, you know, we, we make sure that we do something to, to not only, you know, show these workers that we care, but also reward them for the incredible job that they've done, uh, to keep us fed throughout the pandemic. Uh, again, thank, want to thank the council for taking the opportunity to, uh, you know, discuss this and uh, again, I just want to express my support for the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Our next speaker is Maria. Maria, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
We had you for a second there, Maria.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Well, thank you so much for your time. Um, I was in the last meeting and Bambi pretty much covered the whole thing. I was going to say that the employees in Clayton Safeway have risked through the whole pandemic. I was one of the employees that was really affected by this from then till now because I lost one family member, my babysitter. I have to change my schedule of work, working from mornings to nighttime. Um, because I don't have no one to take care of my baby. In the morning, when I was at work before, my whole life's changed ever since COVID started. I haven't been able to take vacation because I can't even afford it either. Um, and I really, I'm, I'm here because I want to speak for the whole store of Clayton Safeway employees to see if you guys can help us get, um, the hazard pay. Um, we really, really, I know this is almost over, but I know we struggle, not only me, a lot of employees here in the store, um, by all. And please, please, we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Janet?
Our next speaker is Kenny. Kenny, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Kenny, welcome.
Hi, thank you for the time tonight. My name's Kenny Scanlon. I'm a twenty year grocery employee and now a union representative for UFCW Local Five. Um, Bambi and John and Maria, um, we've covered a lot here. Um, I want to point out that uh, none of us in this meeting or anyone that we know have been through a pandemic. Um, as it seems, it's, it's coming to, uh, I want to say coming to an end, but there's light at the end of the tunnel. I don't think that's time for us to relax or ignore the fact that people have passed away. A lot of grocery employees have passed away and risked, and risked a lot over the year, uh, the last fifteen months uh, that we've been in, in this situation. Um, I see these, I see these employees working hard every day coming in, uh, with no options other than to work, as Bambi pointed out, to take care of uh, childcare issues. Um, spouses losing their, their jobs due to the pandemic. Um, it's, it's something that we can't be ignorant about and just say, too bad, too sad. We're coming to an end. Sorry about your luck. Um, it has to be taken care of. It's something that should be seriously considered. Um, on behalf of the workers, I would like to say thank you to all of you. Um, I appreciate your dedication and your, and your uh, faithfulness to your companies. And I think it's time that they showed something, whether it's retro or they continue to have an ordinance in place. Um, once again, thank you for your time. And uh, please consider this strongly. Thanks.
Excuse me, thank you, Kenny.
Our next speaker is Bassam. As I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Uh, good evening again, uh, council, mayor, uh, vice mayor. Um, I hope you could hear me.
Again, welcome back.
Uh, like Vice Mayor Cloven, I had no idea about what's going on with, with this issue until last meeting and, and tonight. And listening twice, last time and this time, to speakers like Maria, it just, I cannot understand how their corporation could actually literally abandon them. So if anything that could come from, from this, at least retroactively, help those who helped us all. Because when we were all hiding in our houses, these guys were on the front line. Maria actually lost people. So just a little bit of, of compassion, I think it's, it's there and, and maybe even reward for, for, for these poor people that minimum wage, can't vacation, can't even take a sick leave. So please look after these people. They suffered. And the corporations right now with their speaker earlier on, they're after the bottom line. And I get a guarantee, if you go look at their numbers, their numbers are great. Prices are high and their numbers are great. Actually, we are paying for the citizens. So I urge you to support the workers and let's give them back what they gave us for the last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Bassam.
Our next speaker is Kelly. Kelly, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Good evening, city council members.
Hi, Kelly. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. So I also want to acknowledge all my union brothers and sisters that are here with me and all my Clayton eleven ninety-five coworkers that are here with me tonight. You guys, we implore you to please pass our hazard pay tonight. We have worked through this pandemic timelessly for all of you, and I recognize every single one of your faces because we have served you all the way through this event. It was incredibly hard to go through this. I told you last time that we came on that we worked through this and we had outbreaks in the store, which we were infecting each other. We were infecting all of our families and we were infecting all of you. Please understand how difficult this was. We have exhausted our sick leave all the way through this. We had to quarantine. Every time somebody had an outbreak or was technically exposed to it, we had to go out for two weeks, ten days without pay. At a certain point, we aren't getting paid anymore. Do you know, we can't take vacations this year, and yet we were timelessly and tirelessly there for you and the entire community in this store in Clayton Safeway. Do you know that the grocery store has reported a forty percent increase in profits this year? Yet they've only shown us a temporary ten percent increase in pay this year. Yet, we can't take vacations and enjoy ourselves, but we are broke down, beat down and tired from helping the community this year. And you know what? We did it for you guys, and we did it because we love our community, we love our customers, and we love our team. Please, Clayton City Council, please hear our pleas for Clayton City ordinance to be passed for hazard pay. We really appreciate your time. Thank you, brothers and sisters for being here, and let's go Team eleven ninety-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Our next speaker is Scott. Scott, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone.
Hey, guys. Uh, thank you for allowing me to rejoin.
Hey, I know that.
Sounds familiar, doesn't it? Peter, uh, really appreciate you bringing this to people's attention. Um, it often goes under the radar. It needs to be addressed. Guys, uh, these people are frontline workers. It's really that plain and simple. We readily and without any hesitation offer all kinds of benefits to cops, firefighters, healthcare workers, and rightfully so. This is what we should do. Let us recognize that we need to do the same for these people. It's really just that easy. Like Commissioner Bassam Alkwal said, these people are giving it their all on the front lines while we hide in our houses. And they're suffering. They're suffering and they need our help. Let's do the right thing, Clayton. And they're suffering. They're suffering and they need our help. Let's do the right thing, Clayton. Offer them hazard pay. Do the right thing. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you, Scott.
Our next speaker is Vanessa. Vanessa, if you can please unmute your microphone as you're promoted to panelist.
Can you guys hear me?
Hi Vanessa, we can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, city council members. My name is Vanessa and I've been with Clayton Safeway for three years now and I have to say I don't agree with Evan. Safeway has made record profits like Kelly mentioned. They started giving us a hazard pay of $3, I think, towards the beginning, which lasted maybe a month or two, and then took it away. And that's something they should never have taken away. Like all the grocery stores around us, they are still paying their employees and we deserve it just as much. I'm sorry guys. Anyways, please consider retro hazard pay. I know things are getting better, but we deserve to get paid when Concord started to get paid because over half of our customers are from Concord. So please, please consider hazard pay, whether it be retro or what. We deserve it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Vanessa. Do we have anyone else, Janet?
Mayor, well, if I do not have any other speakers on this item.
Okay, then we'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. And now we can have our discussion. Who wants to jump in?
I'll jump, jump in. Um, I too want to thank Peter for bringing it to our attention because I was asked last week while I was grocery shopping, the same question you got a few weeks ago, which was why we denied it. Um, and she was extremely sweet. Um, it's one of the, um, workers that I've seen now many years that we've been going there. But she just said, can I ask you a question? I said, sure. Um, and she just says, she looked me dead in my eye and she asked, why won't you guys give us the hazard pay that we've asked for? I just said, I'm not sure what you mean, why we won't give it to you. And she says, you guys denied it. And I said, that's not true. And then she said, well, that's what they're telling us. They're telling us that you guys denied it and won't give it to us. And I don't understand why you guys would do that to us. And I said, I don't know who they is, but that's incorrect because it has not come before our city council. So for any of the 1195 workers on the call today, I need you to understand very clearly what Peter said, which is this is the first time tonight that we're actually discussing it and it had not come before us. So if emails had been sent, um, as Bambi, uh, said, she sent an email in April, um, that was the first email, but we had not discussed anything and nothing had been denied. Um, and I, I just want to be sure that that's crystal clear to everyone that supports that store. Um, I thank you guys for everything that you guys have done. Um, again, I was in the house. I had kidney issues, had a kidney transplant, couldn't come to the store, had to use Instacart, um, and use friends to get my groceries last summer. Um, so I can't thank you guys enough for everything that you guys were doing, um, putting your guys' selves on the line um, during the pandemic, um, and trying to support your families as well. I'm glad we're having this discussion. Um, I think it was, it was just Vanessa, um, who gave the idea of possibly going back retro to when Concord implemented theirs possibly. Um, I think that that's something that I do want to talk more about to the, the council if we do consider this. Um, but someone else had mentioned, um, approving this tonight. And I, I also want to be clear that this is not an action item on our agenda tonight. This is for us to have a discussion as a council to see where we want to move towards, if we want to do anything and direct staff on where to go next. So there, there won't be a decision on this, this evening, um, just so that everybody that supports that store understands. Um, I do have a lot of questions, um, especially for a lot of the, the stats that we were given tonight. And the five of us can't answer our questions. I think we just talked amongst ourselves, but a lot of numbers were thrown out, um, and a lot of stats. And I personally would want to delve into that a little bit more, uh, if we're going to have a discussion about this because I'm, I'm a little perplexed on, on some of the comments that were made. Um, specifically, I wanted to know a little bit more about, um, well, a lot of the numbers that Evan threw out. 160 hours of paid leave, I thought is what he said. I'll have to go back and listen to the video to see if that was correct. Um, and that they had received $2 or $3 more in pay. It sounded to me like that was something that was temporary from what the other workers were saying. Possibly that's what he's referring to. Um, and also delve more into a little bit about what it's harmful to the store would mean. Um, I'm curious what all of that means, but then I also just, I, this is all new to me. Again, uh, as someone just said, we've never gone through a pandemic before. I think that might have been John who said it. Um, and this is all brand new and he's right, but I, I'm trying to understand why this falls upon the local jurisdictions to, to have a discussion about. Um, when workers have their unions to, to have negotiations with their employers, et cetera, I'm trying to understand how this comes to fall on us. And I was reading a little bit about it in the packet that was given for the Concord, um, city council. But it's still just not clear to me on why this falls to us and why this isn't something that the unions are negotiating with the employers. Um, I'm not against giving it to them. I'm just saying I have questions about it and need to understand a little bit more. Um, I'm also curious what Antioch is doing, since they're one of our nearby cities as well, if they're considering retroactive pay because it looked like in some of the emails we received that, uh, South San Francisco was the only one who did a retro pay and that was only going back, I think it was two weeks from the first time that it was discussed within the council. Um, not going back, you know, weeks later. So tonight's the first night that we're discussing it. If this was something that we're going to have on a future agenda, it's possible that it would only be retroactive back until now. It's something we would have to discuss. So I'm saying all of this so that to level set, so everybody that's on the call understands what this is about tonight and just to throw all of this out here that I have a lot of questions and I think if we're going to direct staff in any particular way, it possi- I, I, we're limited. I mean, we, we, we don't have that large of a city. Our staff, as we know, we're already trying to fill two positions. I'm a little leery of using a lot of staff resources to, um, to do a little bit more digging for us. So I just think that's something that we needed to, to think about tonight and I'll stop there. I might come back in a minute though, but I'll let everybody else speak.
I have the same questions you do with regards to collective bargaining. Anybody else want to jump in? Jim? No? Yes?
I'll chime in. I, I gotta be honest with you all. Uh, I'm a 50-year-plus member of the FFL CIO Local 47 of the Musicians, American Federation of Musicians. And I chime in about why, uh, it's brought, it's gonna, I'm gonna, I'm not, I may not be able to vote because of that. I just want to put that on the table. Uh, it would appear to be a conflict of interest if I, uh, chimed in on a vote that affected another union. Uh, but again, as council member Tillman has made, and I need to know why the local union five hasn't been able to negotiate with the, uh, uh, store ownership. I, I don't understand that. I mean, I belong to a mighty big union and, uh, they get a lot of, uh, uh, concessions simply by going through the negotiation process. I gotta, and I get a bulletin every month on the current issue, either with the motion picture groups that, you know, have issues with the musicians that are playing, uh, for music and, in, uh, in, uh, uh, movies and so on, and on television and so forth. So, I mean, they have a pretty strong position, the union does, and that's why they're there. They're to speak for the little person who cannot speak for themselves. Thank you.
I have a, a quick, can we ask questions, Amala, then with regard to the, I too am a union member, a very long-term, big union. And, um, and so I want to make sure that, you know, we're able to discuss and vote to what we need to do and didn't realize, uh, until Jim brought that up just now, that that could be a conflict of interest. But I agree that, you know, with regard to the collective bargaining, the union certainly has a lot of, a lot of power and the one that I belong to. So, Amala, where, where are we on that? Do we need to recuse ourselves? Can we have part of the discussion?
I, I don't believe, and maybe you can clarify for the record, I don't believe either of you would be financially impacted by this decision. Um, should there be a decision to require hazard pay? Um, given that I presume that the employers that may be triggered, I don't believe either of you are currently working for those type of employers. So I guess that's my question. Would either of you be financially impacted by this decision?
For me, not at this present time, no.
Clarify that for me, Amala. Working for what? Working for the grocery union? I don't.
Correct. So I don't think there's a legal conflict, but if, if you as union members feel like you have, um, another obligation or conflict, then that would be.
Yeah, I would have to check with our legal counsel. Um, and they're right down in Los Angeles, so I can do that and get an opinion on, uh, what I could do. Cause I'm, right now I'm reluctant to do anything, uh, without checking with them.
How does that affect the, the conversation tonight, though?
I think what Amala is saying that the only conflict is the ones that you may have with yourselves. There's no legal conflict.
Correct.
I have no problem with this, as long as I'm able to proceed. And I don't think that I need to check with our union as long as we're okay with what Amala is telling us, so, for me.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have some thoughts. I'm, I'm most curious what Peter, uh, is thinking since he's the one who introduced the, the item.
You know, uh, thanks Jeff, I appreciate that. I mean, I'm looking at the, our attendees list and I recognize checkers. Do I go through checkout lines and see, I see Afiva's name here? And I, I, I smile every time I see her. She has awesome style and glasses and, and, and I, I, I understand who, who I'm talking about when, when we have this conversation. And that's part of the reason I wanted to bring this up is that I, I, I wanted to acknowledge each and every one of them as a, an essential worker that really helped our community in time of, of, of dire need and they did it selflessly and often to their own detriment. And I, I, I just want to acknowledge who they were and what they did. I'm conflicted on this. And the reason why I'm conflicted on this is that, uh, if with this, if the union had done their job and come to us in January like they did to the city of, of, of Concord, and we had a chance to look at this in January and look at this and, and, and review it with, with two months left, um, then I would have been in a position where, yeah, I'd be fully supportive of it. But as it is right now in this place right here, I mean, we've got to figure out what we're even interested in doing. It's not going to come back to us for another two weeks, possibly another four weeks. And by that time we're out of our, uh, into a tier where it's not even, even mattered. So now we're talking about, uh, retroactive pay, which I'm not sure I'm in a place where I really want to try to enforce that or, or request that at an employer. I tend to be a little more on the conservative side fis- fiscally, just, just because that's who I am. And uh, looking at our resources, like, like, like Holly said, looking at where we're at, um, I, I'm challenged by this. Um, it, it's, it's, it's a tough place to be for me and I just want to acknowledge that and be honest.
Do we have any data with how this affected Concord? Prices at their safeways and grocery stores and, uh, I didn't see it.
Just, you know, novice stats. I shop at the one at Deckinger. I shop at our local, I'm sorry, our local checkers, I'm sorry. But I do, it depends on where I am on my route. I go to the one in Walnut Creek. I go where it's convenient. I'm paying the same prices to answer your question, Mayor, um, regardless of which store I'm going to.
I, I also want to say, I, I do have a, uh, I'm personally challenged by the fact that the workers are being told that we denied this. I, I, I shouldn't have energy that way, but for them to say that we're responsible for their not getting that, uh, when it's not us, um, that, that, that kind of rubs me a little bit wrong. I just want, I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah, that seems like a bit of misinformation as well. You know, I guess, um, you know, with regards, I think, you know, just with regards to the retro pay, you know, I think what we were informed of previously that retro pay has a, um, a retroactive, if we were to do this retroactively, um, that carries a risk of unconstitutional taking, which, uh, I would believe that it does. Um, that seems like that would be pretty problematic, given our lack of staff, lack of resources and lack of desire to get into protracted lawsuit over, uh, constitutional issues. So that seems like, you know, I would say, you know, for me, that would be off the table, um, just because it just seems like a very bad idea. Uh, in addition, you know, when you look at the Concord ordinance, they talk about how there's, their city acknowledges that by doing this, you incur risk of litigation. Uh, I think there's been several cities in California and outside of California that have been sued, uh, as a result of this. Uh, as they're also taking these types of actions. And I would say that, you know, just to be clear, um, we, it's not us, the city or the taxpayers, uh, that would foot the bill for this directly at least. I think this is, this is a city, a government, uh, says a municipality, interceding between the relationship of an employer and their employee to force them to pay. And it seems, I mean, it seems somewhat misguided, I would say, just because, you know, we're, we talk about the term essential workers and, you know, I'm, I'm very grateful for the work that was done. And if someone were to ask me, do, um, do grocery store workers and other essential workers, do they merit hazard pay because of the, the conditions that they're working in? I would say, hell yeah, of course they do. That's something that they need to do between them and their employer. If someone said that, should we use the power of government to compel action and intercede between their relationship between private entities, when they themselves are in the strongest position to argue on their behalf because they pay dues for a union that's what to represent them? I would say, hell no. That is not the role that we should take in forcing some private entity and intercede between their negotiated wages. That, you know, they, of all the groups that have essential workers, um, it's not just Safeway, there's lots. And if we're going to go down this route, um, Safeway workers are probably in the best position to argue on their behalf because they have such a great union. Um, there's essential workers that didn't get any hazard pay. And when you're talking about it, you know, if we're talking about being consistent, like, it seems very odd to, to isolate or to single out this one group. You know, and also, you know, I, there, I, I fail to see how mandating an increased wage does anything for public safety. Cause really this is under the auspices of, uh, our police, the city's police power to enact measures for public safety. But increasing the wage of a limited set of workers, you know, without, um, any concrete use of the wage, like of the dollars, like I don't see how that helps public safety. I mean, it does put money in the pocket of people. That is certainly true. But, you know, if we really want to increase public safety, you know, I think that we would intercede in terms of safety measures. Similar to how the county went beyond the requirements of the state. The state said, you, you know, you are required to do acts. And we said, well, our county said, well, that's not good enough. We want to do more. And so they implemented even more safety measures. Directly, you know, that was directly speaking to public safety. Increasing people's wages does not do that. And so, you know, you know, similar to the comments that were before that, you know, the tier system's ending. In two weeks, no more tiers. In two weeks, no more capacity limits, no more. Well, I don't know if the Plexiglas is part of it, but all of that, everyone now, essentially all adults who want to be vaccinated can be right now. Um, all children over 12. Well, my, I think, you know, where you could be in between, like in between your first and second round. But by the time this is over, or by the time this would pass, they would all, anyone who wants to be that are in those age groups can be vaccinated. So what we're talking about is something that is not timely in any way. I would say, you know, an ordinance takes two readings and then it needs to be drafted. So that is three meetings away, six to seven weeks at a minimum. I, 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 I fail to see how that this is, that this is there. So, I would say, you know, the, again, the unions are responsible for negotiating on behalf of their employees. Like the fact that they did not, and now they come to the city or other cities, or essentially coming to the government to do their job, that's not our role.
Peter?
Hey, another question, uh,
Or Jim?
How, how, you know, we're talking about Safeway only. What about CVS and Walgreens who are in our communities and they too have, in the gross look, more than 300 employees. What happened with them? I guess. That's another question that needs to be answered.
The other, um, it looked like in the other ordinances that were passed by the other cities, they included all The other, um, it looked like in the other ordinances that were passed by the other cities, they included all um, employers of a certain size of which CVS and Walgreens would fall under. So it looked like it wasn't just Safeway workers. It applied to those grocers as well or entities as well.
Peter?
Sorry, I was just trying to.
No, I, I, one of the things that, that comes to my mind, um, and I, I'll just say this, that we are going to receive some significant funds from the American Recovery Act that we're going to have control of to disperse to those people that are impacted, um, by COVID. I can think of several businesses in our town that were devastated by the past fifteen months. Several businesses. And I can think of several citizens, including Safeway workers, that were devastated, um, by COVID in the past fifteen months. And this is where we have direct control to be able to use funds that are given us for that purpose to help people who, um, were in need, were PPP and other things just weren't enough to keep their business going. Um, but they have served the community well, long-term, and I still want to continue working in our community. This is where I see that we, we have an ability to, to help our citizens and our small businesses. And, um, that's kind of where I'm leaning towards i- is giving that assistance.
Can I piggyback off that just to play devil's advocate just a little bit? Cause I'm trying to figure out how that actually works. So we would take in funds and you're saying, I'm just going to use the Safeway employees since that's what we're discussing tonight. How does that work? We, it doesn't make sense to give it to Safeway, right? If they've already got their profits, it shouldn't go to the corporation. So how does that look to give the a hundred and thirty employees that Bamy told me earlier today, work at our local Safeway? How does that work to give those hundred and thirty people a bonus? I don't know what else to call it, to, to give them a stipend. How does that work?
We're going to receive a pot of funds. We're going to have to have it managed probably by an outside third party to figure out how it's going to disperse with whatever training wheels we put on it, whatever guidelines that might be. And I'm in, in, in line that that would go to Clayton residents. Unfortunately, that, that, that they would take out Concord workers who, who work at that Safeway. I get that. I apologize. But for Clayton residents, I would like to see some ability for them to receive some of that in some way. Again, that would be some conversation we'd have to have in the future. But there are ways that funds could be dispersed i- i- in that manner to those who have been challenged. And, uh, that's, it's going to be a significant amount, um, and we got to figure out what that looks like. Again, that's down the line, down the line.
To further that, you're also going to have to look at those Clayton businesses that are both employers and, uh, and owners that have to be somehow compensated, I guess, for all of this. So it, that's a longer term issue. I mean, we're not going to settle that tonight or within the next six weeks.
But there are a lot of them that really could use some help. A lot of them.
It's, yeah, it's not just the businesses. I mean, like, consider even our own police. Like our police, they work the entire time. They, you know, they're the low, like we often say, they're the lowest paid in the county by far. So was the rest of our city staff. And, you know, when we talk about it, they were all impacted as well. I mean, not to the same extent, and I'm not trying to compare the, compare the two, because that's really not cool. So I'm not going to do that. But I do think that, you know, when we talk about assisting folks that were impacted, you know, isolating just essentially Safeway, CBS and Walgreens because they seem to have deep pockets. That, that doesn't seem appropriate. Now, to the extent that we do receive money for that purpose, as Peter, as you say, perfect. That's what it's there for. So then we do it. This is, this is not that. This is telling another business they have to pay their workers more. Um, this is not, you've been given money to help your community. This is compelling some private entity that they need to do something else.
And you think about the people like, uh, the, uh, the Village Market. They were closed. They were, they were open as well. And how do we exclude that? And, and like you said, Peter, the other businesses in town that took a great hit, had to lay off people, uh, you know, at Maresse's, Ed's, whatever, um, you know, there, there's a lot, a lot of people that took a big hit for fifteen.
Beer salons, restaurants. I mean, just think about, those are small businesses and residents of Clayton that really nailed, were nailed by this. And, and still haven't recovered because the PPP loans just weren't enough to keep their businesses going. This is what I see, this is what I see we can do for our own community, um, versus mandating Safeway, do something for that that's out of our control.
I'm, I'm confused as to, uh, the whole, uh, unemployment that they, they weren't eligible for at, uh, the grocery workers, is there?
I think the comment was they continued to work, therefore they were not eligible for unemployment.
Oh, I see. I see. Okay. Thank you. So, so am I hearing the, the council leaning more toward, uh, doing something with the rescue funds that we're going to be getting and trying to figure out something down the road that would significantly help, um, the businesses in our town and, uh, and the workers in our town?
I think that's a great idea, but that's not really on the table at the moment. No.
Correct. That's not on the agenda. So I think, you know,
I, I get that. I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap up into a conclusion on this particular directive to, uh, to the staff.
I, I would not direct staff to take any action.
No act.
I would, I would say, given the timing on this thing and how far it would be until we actually had something that would be concrete, anything we do would be retroactive and I'm kind of hesitant to do so. Holly? In addition to what Holly said earlier, just putting any more burden on our staff as challenging as it is with regard to our staffing load. Um, and looking forward to what we might be able to do with the rescue. I, I, I'm, I'm not inclined to pursue at this point. And again, that's not, I have to acknowledge what they did for us during that period of time and I, and I'm doing that, but, and hoping that we can somehow help them in the future in our own way, which would be actually e- even better possibly than what they would give them to Safeway.
Um, uh, I agree. I'm not, I don't want to discount at all everything that they've done for us in the last, excuse me, fifteen months. And the considerable care that they took to have to get up every day and go do what they did. Um, I don't think words are enough to thank them for that. And to the extent that we can help them down the road, um, with coming up with something, um, on our own, that'd be great. But I am extremely concerned with staffing levels and the time constraints, especially given what we have coming up on the calendar. Um, and as Jeff pointed out, how many weeks we are away from this even possibly coming to an action item on a gen- on an agenda, uh, during the summer. To me, it's just not feasible. And again, I still have many questions, um, that would take probably several meetings for me to get answered just to understand the stats that we were given tonight. I don't understand the collective bargaining piece and why it's coming to us to intercede. So, um, I'm not inclined to ask staff to come back, uh, as far as hazard pay for a future agenda item. But I do like the idea, uh, once we get past budget and everything else on our upcoming agendas, to have some discussion on how we can help once we get the CARES Act funds in. So to me, it doesn't sound like, unless someone wants to make a motion to have staff go do work on this, it doesn't sound like that's happening unless Jim or Carl have something.
Well, I think, or I've spoken already. And I agree with the concept of looking at the, uh, Recovery Act, uh, money that's coming out. I've asked, I've even pursued that with our city manager. And we are going to have to have, uh, a third party outside entity do that. Cause I don't think we have the capacity in our staff today for sure. Or in the future, we'd have anybody that could be diverted to do that. But that's the alternative that looks most promising.
All right. So it sounds like we're in agreement that we are not going to direct staff to take any action. Correct?
No motion, no direction.
Okay. So, Raina? Do you have what you need? Do we need to do a motion in some, there's no?
I, I have exactly what I need.
Good. Okay. So we will move on, uh, to item ten, council items limited to request directives for future meetings.
I have one and I gotta get the language out.
Okay, take your time.
Yeah, just give me a second here.
No problem.
Well, he's pointing.
Here we go. Okay, for a future item. And this relates to our, uh, uh, our, uh, non-governmental sign entities and relationships and how we, we govern that. And I would like to request that, uh, we have a future item to, uh, see if there are any modifications that we can make to our current, uh, non-governmental sign code that could be legal. And yet assist us in mitigating a very, very, uh, challenging issue that faces this city council and our city. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Holly, you wanted to say something there?
I just wanted to ask if we could explain to the, uh, attendees who still had their hands up that this, they look like they wanted to speak on that item. There were hands up.
Public, public comments were closed.
Spoken, it was closed. That's, I just wanted to let them know that.
Thank you.
They had raised their hands after the fact.
Thank you. Yes, public comment was closed. All right. Anybody else have any other requests or directives?
Yeah, I, I, I had something. Are we gonna, um, when were we planning to talk about the summer schedule?
I think at the, on the meeting on the fifteenth, uh, uh, Raina is going to be talking about that.
And then I get.
Next meeting.
Okay, great. And then so also after the fifteenth, there's no mask requirement. There's no capacity requirement. And there's no anything requirement. Are we going back to the city, to, uh, Hoyer Hall?
I would hope we're going to go back very soon, but I think, Raina, you want to talk about, uh, the, the, um, hybrid system that we need or whatever?
Sure. Um, just to, um, uh, clarify kind of the plan. One is to wait and see what the governor's order says. Two, the long-term plan is to try to find some mechanism to do a hybrid system since we do seem to get additional participation. Um, and if the council wants to, to move that direction. Um, we are still waiting for final guidance on, um, how OSHA requirements for employees. So we need to sort that through as well. They are scheduled to take action on that on Thursday. Um, so, uh, probably at the next meeting, which will be the day the world changes. In theory, um, we could, uh, have a, a discussion about, um, timing for moving back to Hoyer Hall.
Cause we're not making the joint, the split meeting between in-person and whatever we call this, as a require, as a prerequisite for us to go back to Hoyer. Is that correct?
I think it's going to be up to what the governor, uh,
Well, I mean, no, not necessarily, because the governors allows us to do this, but they don't say that you must do both going forward. So I think like, my question is, is it a prerequisite that we have a mechanism to do both before we do in-person? Is that what, is that the position that we're taking?
No. So under, under the cur- well, so under the current, under current law, it will depend on what the governor does with his executive orders, um, regarding, um, uh, Brown Act components, right? So we need to figure out, is he just, um, lifting that executive order entirely? Is he modifying that executive order, et cetera? If he, for example, simply lifts the executive order and we go back to the old Brown Act, then we need to go back to, to public meetings in a public location with a place for the public to come. And there've always been, um, mechanisms to deal with, um, individual needs for teleconference if we needed to do that, et cetera. Um, there is state legislation moving that would require a hybrid model. Um, we don't know where that is, but so far that hasn't moved quickly. So I don't believe that that will necessarily play a role, but we are watching that. Um, and so, uh, we, um, having a hybrid is not currently going to be a prerequisite to moving back to Hoyer Hall unless something else changes. But we're also still waiting for a lot of information from, uh, the governor on what that public meeting.
I've heard the same, I've heard the same thing from other mayors that have met with, uh, the whole kind of wait and see ballgame. In the meantime, trying to gear up for, uh, their technology.
Okay. Yeah. Because my understanding of the current, even if there's no change, under the current executive orders, sans the health requirements, like we table that for a second. The current executive orders do not prohibit people from meeting, they just in-person, they just allow the meetings to happen like this. So there's nothing preventing us from going back after the fifteenth because all the restrictions are essentially gone unless the county supersedes the state.
Correct.
So the governor needing to do nothing and we could still meet unless the county precludes it, or I guess OSHA.
Right.
Cause it's not, it's not the executive orders right now that are doing anything after the fifteen.
Except we just don't know what tho- those orders are going to be. And like you said, county, the county may intercede and, and put something else on top of it. I hope we go back to Hoyer Hall very soon.
I was just going to say, maybe if we do want to discuss this, we could agendize this for the June fifteenth.
Sounds good. Sounds good, legal counsel.
All right. Anything else? Okay. So thank you to everybody for joining us. Our next, uh, city council meeting is on June fifteenth. And we have no closed session today, so we are adjourned. Thank you.